Good evening. I'd like to invite you to the Cedar Falls Board of Education meeting tonight. I'd like to welcome some scouts that we have from Troop 55. And then I'd also like to welcome upper Iowa students. And the majority of them, I think, are in early education, I think is what they were saying, shaking your head back there. And I want to go to kudos to Ms. Andy Rowe, Angie Rowe, for bringing your students here tonight. So Rowan, I'm sorry, Angie Rowan, thank you for being here. And it's always exciting to have you be at a school morgue meeting. So better to see us in person than to watch us on TV. So thank you for joining us. With that, I'll call this meeting to order. And I have a public hearing. I have something I need to read. I have in my possession an affidavit, a publication showing that the notice and time and place of hearing for the sale of a portion of property located at 1002 West First Street, Cedar Falls. This notice was published in the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier on September 28, 2018. The board will now hold a hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and talk about the sale of this property? Hearing none, I'm going to close this hearing. Moving on now to the public hearing. Item C on your agenda. I have in my possession an affidavit, a publication showing the notice of time and place of hearing for the sale and removal of structure located at 2426 Hawthorne Drive, Cedar Falls. This notice was published in the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier on September 28, 2018. The board will now hold a hearing. Are there those in the audience that would like to come and talk about the sale or the sale and removal of this property? Hearing none, I will close this hearing. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It's been moved.
It's been moved by Susie Hines. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been tied, seconded by Jeff Orvis. Do I have any questions or comments?
Just one addition. At your desk or at your seat, you'll see that there's an updated human resources report. And certainly this is, comes as a time of reflection and pause, but certainly an opportunity to highlight somebody's career who is looking to retire from our district here in the next several months. And Adrian has the statement that he's going to read that we are sending out to all of our media as well as our staff tomorrow morning. That talks about the upcoming retirement.
Thank you.
Adrian.
Mr. Doug Nevska, Director of Business Affairs and Board Secretary of the Cedar Falls Community School District, has announced his retirement effective January 31, 2019. He joined the district in 2007, having worked in Decora and New Hampton districts for over 20 years. Doug's broad experience in both finance and operations is widely recognized throughout the state. He served as president of the Iowa Association of School Business Officials, IASBO, in 2015-16. He received the Courier 2015 Finance Leadership Award and the 2018 IASBO Professional Leadership Award. During his tenure in Cedar Falls, enrollment has risen consistently. An extended period of very low increases in state funding, rising health insurance costs, and the need to build an information technology infrastructure to support 21st century teaching and learning has called upon Doug's financial expertise and organizational leadership skills. He has overseen the construction of Aldrich Elementary School and major renovations at Holmes and Pete Junior High Schools, as well as at Southdale, Hanson, Orchard Hill, and North Cedar Elementary Schools. Throughout his career, board members, district officials, and other business officials have recognized Doug as a person of high integrity with a clear commitment to serving the students and communities in which he has lived. External auditors have long acknowledged the accuracy and quality of the district's financial records, reports, and practices. Commenting on Doug's impact, a board member in a former district commented, "We have been fortunate to have one of the finest business managers in the state of Iowa." Joyce Coyle, President of the Cedar Falls Board of Education, echoed this sentiment. Doug's thorough and thoughtful advice and guidance has been invaluable to the board throughout his tenure. He has the capacity to help create the big picture and look to the future while paying attention to the very important fine details. The A+ and AA2 ratings the district received from Standard &amp; Poor's Global Moody Investors Services on the bonds which were issued for Aldrich Elementary were a testament to Doug's financial acumen and leadership. He leaves the district in sound financial health. His fingerprints are on the numerous building projects he led and will be a testament to his service for decades. Doug's successor as Director of Business Affairs and Board Secretary will be Danelle Gonnerman, who will be promoted from her current role as Supervisor of Business Services. Danelle is a certified school business official, has a bachelor's degree in business management from UNI, and will serve as the president of the Iowa Association of School Business Officials in 2019-2020. Danelle joined the district in 2010 and has reported directly to Doug since 2012. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian.
Are you looking for me to say anything? Because I don't know anything.
Doug, I mean, it was so well stated, but even more than that, you've always been all about the kids. There's never, none of us would ever question that. And when we have challenged you with things that we have wanted to do, you always find a way graciously to make that happen for us because you know in your heart how it impacted kids. And I need to stop there, but with all my heart, you will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions in regards to the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. It's been passed. Thank you. Okay, moving on to public comment. I have not received any communications. Marika, would you come up? Thank you. Marika Yang is from Cedar Falls High School, and she serves as our representative this year. So she comes every month, twice a month actually, to our school board meeting to share all the ins and outs of what's taking place at the high school. So thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you for having me. So last week, the food drive kicked off at the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, and CF conducted our first bake sale on Thursday and Friday of last week to support the food drive. Student leadership groups have also begun to plan for trunk or treat, which is the annual event where students are able to decorate the trunks of cars into fun themes and hand out candy at the high school for younger kids. The proceeds for this also go toward the food drive. Student Senate has also begun the assembly of all the boxes that would be put into classrooms in the high school where students are able to drop off their canned goods toward the food drive. And the Cedar Falls High School Rocket Club's proposal for the NASA student launch has also been accepted as one of the seven high schools being accepted for the program this year.
Cool.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Was that your coat? Is that the Rocket Club?
Yes.
Okay.
I have my Rocket Club coat on today. Yes, we're really excited.
Oh, it's really good.
And will it be a way of donating online again for the food drive?
Yes, we're actually going to send out a link that should be available really soon for that.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Were you involved with the Rocket Club last year?
No, just this year.
Just this year, fantastic.
It'll be good. We're excited.
It's a really neat club, really neat organization, and again, now kind of nationally known, especially after placing in the top three, I believe, last year in the high school competition out in Washington DC. So tremendous opportunity.
Yeah, and they actually cut down the number of high schools they let in this year. Last year it was 14. This year they only let in seven high school teams, and we made it in.
Wow, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. All right, moving on to the newsletter. Janelle Darce is not with us this evening, so Andy's going to review the newsletter.
Yeah, so I have the honor of going through the newsletter. If you could pull up the PowerPoint slides, a lot of different things that are going on. It's always exciting to highlight the great news and information that's occurring across the district. So I know I won't do as well as Janelle may do, so I'll try my best. Congratulations on the homecoming court. Marika was one of the individuals in this picture as well. We had a great homecoming week, very exciting with our senior leadership and the work that they provide across our district because they do a lot of work in our elementaries and junior highs. It was just really exciting to have that homecoming week with the culmination of the homecoming court. We had all of our Southdale students that walked to Hy-Vee as part of the Healthy Kids Walk. Hy-Vee is a Southdale Partner in Education, which is really exciting. They gave each of our students water and an apple as they walked those few blocks over to Hy-Vee. Congrats to Lori Ingle, English teacher at Pete Junior High, for winning $1,000 for the First Cedar Valley Tools for Schools. Mrs. Ingle plans to use that money to buy some more rocking chairs, potentially some standing desks, some other things for her students. It's always exciting to see the students react, especially when we have those announcements that occur within the classrooms. Congratulations to Tiger Marching Band for earning straight Division Ones in all categories. Again, from all the six judges at state contests, they always do a tremendous job with their program, their events, and certainly always show great, great class and honor for the work that they do. It's a bittersweet day for CF CAPS education students here this last week. It was the last day in their first placements. We're very excited about the Center for Advanced Professional Studies and the work that they do across the Cedar Valley, working with businesses, in this case, working with students in classrooms. It's a really valuable learning experience, not only for the CAPS associates, our high school students, but certainly the students that they work with as well. Last week was college application week at Cedar Falls High School. Day number three was actually with UNI. We have a great number of students that work directly with college enrollment individuals, and they can fill out their applications so they start looking at which colleges they will be looking at for next year. Little-known piece of information, this was, came out last week. Cedar Falls Schools was one of six districts involved with a case study on the implementation of teacher leadership and compensation, the roughly $150 million grant that the Department of Education puts on. You can see there, we were the largest district involved with this, and the case study really focused on why did the, some districts really have successful implementation of this, the involvement of different committees and different groups, and certainly they interviewed a large number of people. Finally, certified enrollment, which we're really excited about, right now appears to be up around 108 students. That drives our funding formula and our budget for the upcoming next fiscal year. And it's always exciting to be one of the really few districts across the state that are growing, certainly at the amount that we are currently continuing to move forward with. Just as a reminder, Marika did a great job describing this. The food drive is running through from October 2nd to November 2nd, and certainly this is in honor of one of our great former teachers, Lawrence Richard, and he always had a great quote, "Put more kindness into the world than you take out." And once again, this is kind of an honor of him and all the work that he provided. Please follow us on all the social media accounts and our building accounts. We have so many great things that are happening within our buildings. Again, best staff in the world that work directly with our students, and certainly it's always neat to see what they are doing and have on social media.
Thank you.
So our other highlight is our own high school counselor, Susan Langen, who was highlighted in the newspaper.
Which was really neat to see, and just her work for students, with all of our population of students. And we have on Thursday, it's our Mentors for Violence Prevention statewide conference that happens at UNI, and she's been highly involved with that that's occurring this week. And it was great to see that article on the front page of the Courier. We typically do our communications update a little earlier, and we didn't get that in, but I'm sure that'll be in next week, as well as the announcement with the Rocket Club.
Thank you, Jeff. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Moving on then to the appointment of the treasurer. Do I have a motion to appoint the treasurer?
I move to appoint Daniel Lynch as Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education Treasurer for the 2018-19 school year.
Thank you, Susie. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Dan, if you meet me at the podium there.
Dan, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and passionately, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of School Board Treasurer and the Cedar Falls Community School District, Cedar Falls, Iowa, as now and hereafter required by law?
Thank you, Dan, for serving in this role. And I believe now this is the third year in this role, so again, we appreciate that greatly and your service to all of our students in the community of Cedar Falls. So thank you for that.
Now we can move on to the approval of the Certified Annual Report, or the CAR Report. Mr. Nevska.
Well, thank you. We do have a presentation that we'll throw up, and we'll kind of walk through some numbers in the presentation, if we can. Thank you very much for that. See if we can get this in. Maybe it'll work, there we go. And just as a reminder to everybody, that the Certified Annual Report is a report that all school districts and education agencies in Iowa are required to report with the Department of Education. And within the CAR is the Special Education Supplement, which talks about revenue expenditures associated with our special education program. And the school district uses Department of Education Uniform Financial Accounting for LEAs and AEA's to make sure we expense things appropriately and account for revenues appropriately as well. They say a presentation should be easy to understand, and hopefully this presentation is, but they also say it should be done in three minutes, and I can tell you that's not going to happen. So you may want to rethink those kind comments you had a little bit earlier, so. Just to recap, the board, I think, is pretty much aware of this, but for those individuals that are new to this, the district is required to record its revenues and expenditures through governmental funds. And in our school district here at Cedar Falls, we have Fund 10, which is the general fund. But we also, I'll break that down a little bit more detail to show Funds 12, 14, and 16, and you can see the different revenue and expenditures subdivisions that we do for that. Special revenue funds, which include student activity management and the district support trust fund. Governmental funds include the capital project funds, and we have three of those right now. The Fund 31 is the general obligation bonds, and that's of course, funding Aldrich Elementary and portions of North Cedar and Orchard Hill. Fund 33 is our statewide one cent sales tax, which we're using to finish off Orchard and North Cedar, and our physical plant and equipment levy, as well as our debt service levy. And as the board knows, we have to transfer funds from one fund to the debt service levy to make some debt obligation payments. Our school nutrition program is in Fund 61, and then there's a high school student shop fund is on 68. And then we have a couple of fiduciary funds for private purpose trusts and agency funds, and you can see what those are for. The big one is the River Hills Consortium, which Cedar Falls is the fiscal agent for that consortium. And just as a reminder, as we go through all of this, definitions, assets means cash and receivables and inventory on hand, and fund balance are total assets minus any payables and accrued expenses. So in the general fund, we'll start off with that first. We ended the year slightly up about $400,000. You can see our total assets moved to 12.25 million, and actual fund balance was 5.27. That's about $400,000, more than what it was a year ago. That's a direct result of the district and the board approving some increases in the cash reserve levy to sort of boost some cash flow balances. We were getting pretty low on cash balances at one time, and so we're starting to move that in the right direction a little bit. This shows revenue and expenditures for the year as a whole. You can see that we had, again, about $400,000 more in revenue than we did expenditures. Now, that revenue does include that cash reserve levy that I referred to earlier, and that would be the primary reason why we see a positive amount of exchange there between revenue and expenditures. A little bit more of a detail, you can see that from a percentage perspective, about 35.5% of our revenue in the general fund came from the property taxes from local citizens and business owners in town, 54.4% from the state of Iowa, and then the remainder, just over 10% from the federal government. This breaks it down a little bit more, of a detail showing actual dollars received. That 5.7 to 5 million dollar number is categorical dollars. That would be teacher salary supplement, teacher leadership compensation money, professional development money that the district receives, four-year-old preschool program dollars. A lot of the categoricals roll into that. And then the 2.4 million right above it, that's what's called flow-through money. And those are dollars that the district is obligated to pay to the local AEA for their operational expenses. And then breaking the miscellaneous income down a little bit further, you can see 3.55 of that total is local, but in reality, 2.74 of that's tuition-in dollars, either through open enrollment in or through special education tuition in. And so that's the biggest share of that. Other miscellaneous income would include textbook fees that parents pay when they register their students for school, rental of facilities, other minor local grants, and those sorts of things. Mobile home taxes that we receive is considered miscellaneous income, that sort of thing. On the state, wanted just to make a note that you'll notice in the previous year, we had 1.78 million of miscellaneous income. That was the first year of the teacher leadership compensation funding that the district received. And in the first year of that, the state of Iowa considers that a grant. And then in the second year, it rolls right into the categorical bucket. So that's why you see such a bounce between 2016 to 2017 to 2018.
So stated differently, we didn't lose that money, it was just categorized differently.
Right, correctly. They just categorized it differently.
In the previous slide, you could see where it was actually categorized within the third line, 3.9 up to 5.2. So it actually was placed there within that state categorical dollar because it came through as categorical instead of the state dollars.
Yep. And then with the federal dollars, as you can see, the pretty significant change in that. Of course, the big change is we finished out the physical education PEP grant, so there were no dollars received for that. But even without that, we were down about $70,000 or so for the year in federal dollars. The only exception to that was Medicaid dollars. That was an increase, and of course Medicaid dollars are only used to offset special education expenses for those students that have a health plan within their IEP. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a little, in a few minutes.
Doug, could you, what is Title II-A? Could you talk about that for us?
Title II-A is basically, this district uses Title II-A for class size reduction dollars. And for last school year, fiscal 18, as well as in fiscal 19, those dollars are earmarked specifically for North Cedar. There are certain requirements as to the class size and other issues that make North Cedar the best fit for that. In summary, I tried to show a little bit of a pie chart to show what our total revenue expenditures were, revenue, excuse me, in the general fund for the year. So you can see for every dollar, we received about, almost 55 cents came from the state, a little over 35 cents were local property taxes, and then you can see the federal and local, other local amounts where those came from. Expenditures, that's a little bit hard to read, but I tried to consolidate how we break our expenditures out. But basically, between instruction through assessment, that accounts for roughly 75% of every dollar that we received goes directly back towards, directly towards the student use through either instruction or assessment or media services or health services or guidance. And so now we'll talk a little bit about the Special Education Supplement to give everybody a little bit of a background about that. These are for children with special needs, and each child has to have an individual education plan or an IEP that's specifically tailored and developed for that, unique needs of that student. And then the special education program is a part of the school funding program, but it adds additional weighting or realizes there might be a little bit of an extra cost associated with those students, so we get additional dollars of and above the regular 1.0 money. And you can see, the state of Iowa considers all students, first general education students, so they all receive the same cost per pupil. And in Cedar Falls' case, for last year, that was $6,671 per student. And then you can, we received additional dollars whether they were classified for financial purposes as a Level 1, Level 2, or a Level 3 child. And you can see those dollar amounts on the screen as well. And of course, the special education expenses can only be used, or revenue can only be used for those direct costs of providing instruction, and you can see obviously salary benefits for staff and parent educators, specialized training for those individuals, specialized supplies and/or equipment. A classic example of that would be, we basically, in the secondary level, we're a one-on-one school with Chromebooks. So to, so a special education student receiving a Chromebook, that would be considered a general fund, or general education expense. But if a student with special needs has to have a Chromebook or a laptop that has very specific needs for either auditory or learning needs, where they have to have special software or special hardware to run that program, then that expense could be considered special education. So to kind of give you an idea of the difference between regular and non-regular. And of course, health services, we talked about that earlier, but you have to have an individual health plan rolled inside the individual education plan, and that's where the Medicaid reimbursement comes into place. Specialized transportation, and we can talk about that in more detail if you want to. So that basically means just because they get on the bus and ride the bus to school and back doesn't necessarily mean that that's a special education expense. It would have to be a specialized transportation expense for that. And of course, tuition, if we're sending a student to another school district to provide services or administrative costs, and in our case, we do receive a very small amount of administrative costs for the River Hills Consortium and the lead center up in Waverly. So in real short terms, the district, we served 538 resident students last school year, plus we had 21 students that were served by other school districts or agencies, and you can see those on the screen. The district served 74 students from other districts. Now, almost all of those students were open enrolled in students. We had a very small handful of tuitioned in children in the district last school year. And so this kind of gives you an overall idea that we, a grand total of 633 kids were served last year, and that's down 33 kids from the previous year, and you can see the changes in each level. Resident students served, that to kind of break it down into more our students, because when we go through the formula, we add all the expenses out, and we peel out all the expenses that we had for those kids that aren't Cedar Falls resident students to come up with a net. So that's why you need to know the difference between total students served and resident students served. And you can see that number there, pretty close to what it was the previous year. There's the resident out, that was a big change for us. We significantly dropped the number of students that were served in other school districts or other agencies from last year, from the previous year. And this is, this might not look like And this is, this might not look like much to you, but it looks, it's a lot to me because for the first time, and I went back and looked, the first time in at least 15 years, because that's all the further my records that I could easily grab a hold of when, that we actually were funded for more students in last year than what we actually served. Now, how the funding works is those students, that 559 was actually counted on October 1st of 2016. And so there's always at least a year or two years delay in the actual dollars received. But normally, what you see in the graph is pretty typical. The funding usually runs less than the number of students served. But for last school year, it's the first time that I could find in 15 years, and probably even longer than that. But I only had about 15 years instantly available at my fingertips.
So recall too, with the last several graphs, it's focusing on students with special needs. And those dollars are always two years and a rears. So when we have the certified count, based on the seats and students served, there's always a two-year funding gap with that.
So this, the next two slides try to show a revenue and expenditure comparisons. It's a little difficult to read because we have to break all the revenue down. And you can see the different categories across the bottom. We have seven different categories of revenue that comes into the district. And then on the expenditure side, it's actually more than the seven that you see there. There's like, it's like 10 or 11. I've condensed one of them down to kind of give you an idea of where our dollars are going. But in summary, what we ended up with for last year is we had 10.85 in revenue and 11.3 in expenditures. So we had a special ed deficit of $467,283, which is not quite half of the deficit from the previous year. So we knob, we're able to reduce that deficit fairly significantly. So that, that's a good thing, in the fact that then it's less request for additional property taxes to make up for the deficit.
And this is always, you know, hard for members of the community to understand, board members understand this, that they never fully fund the services needed for students with special needs. So almost every district across the state runs a deficit because the IEP requires a certain level of expenditure that goes to maximize those educational experiences for all students, which is our mantra. And what happens is then typically, because the services cost more than the funding received, there's a deficit that's run. And what we're really proud of is that deficit is, has decreased from last year to this year. And you look across the deficits amongst the state, amongst all school districts, I think that did actually go down slightly as well.
And I could have pulled some data comparing our balances against similar-sized districts, but that's a little, all that really is going to show is a number. It's not going to get into the details of how their programs run, what their staffing levels are, and all of the other more fine details of an individual program. All you're going to receive is dollars and knowing where we're at. But I do know that even last year, at our 972,000 number for districts our size, we were on the low end of a deficit in comparison to similar-sized districts.
How are we able to reduce that deficit? How were you able to reduce it so significantly?
So multiple different ways, number of students served. And it depends on, the state funds at different levels based on the needs of students. And there are some students that are considered high-cost students. So all of a sudden, you might have one family that either graduates, or you might have a family that moves out of town or to another community or to another state. And that could be a reduction in, you know, even a 50 to 60 to $80,000 cost that goes above and beyond the revenue that we receive as a state. I think another big component of that is the number of Medicaid dollars that we apply for and receive. And we certainly have a tremendous staff that pays great attention to those dollars that we can get reimbursed for, for Medicaid.
Couldn't have said it better myself. And then in summary, with the special ed, you can see our staffing. To make life a little simpler, I converted this to all FTE. So we actually have more than 102.6 people. It's closer to about 135 or 140 parent educators throughout the district that are specifically dedicated to assisting students with special needs. Plus, we have 60 and a half teachers, to give you an idea of where that's at. So the other thing we're going to talk about a little bit here is the concept of spending authority. And we could, I could spend, well, quite a bit of time on that. But in summary, basically, the concept is spending authority is sort of our credit card limit, for lack of a better way to describe it. And the different pieces that come together on that are the cash that we have on hand, the amount of money we receive from the state of Iowa, as well as local property taxes, and then miscellaneous income, which is basically not state aid or property tax. And then you have your total budget authority, which is the legal amount that we can spend or our maximum credit card limit. And then our unspent balance authority, which is the remaining amount. So you take last year's amount, add all your revenue, subtract all your expenditures, and you come up with your, with your new end-of-year balance. And then the Iowa Association of School Boards has developed a number of key financial indicators that districts should look at when assessing their financial health. And we're going to go through basically four of them. There's two parts to one, but we're going to kind of go through those real quick to kind of give you an idea of where the district ended this year. Certified enrollment, we were down slightly a little bit for last year. I think we were down 19 students. But for this year, while we don't have a final number, it looks like we're up about 108, give or take. And so you can see that overall, the trend has been a very positive one for us over the last seven or eight school years. So moving in the right direction, that's a real plus for us. Our financial solvency ratio had been declining the last few years, but we were able to start to move in a positive direction. Again, the board's willingness to look at the cash reserve levy and bring some more dollars in for cash flow purposes has really helped with that. And you can see the fruits of that in this graph. This kind of gives you a snapshot of funding delays that we will have to deal with. Now, if we're up 108 students, that's going to be approximately a $700,000 funding delay. So that will impact the 2018-19 school year. And plus, any other delays that we'll have for on-time funding for open enrollment and LEP and ELL students. And we'll talk about that a little bit more later on the agenda item in tonight's meeting. Our unspent authority did slip a little bit. We dropped about $830,000 from the previous year. But our undesignedated, unreserved only slipped about $770,000. Now, the difference between the two, for those of you in the audience, is the $7.7 million that you see in the top is our total unspent budget authority. The red line is the net after you subtract out all the categorical dollars or those dollars that are designated for a specific expense, such as the four-year-old preschool program or teacher salary supplement dollars or early childhood intervention dollars or anything like that that the state of Iowa has given us to us as a categorical. So that kind of gives you an idea where that's at. And then our budget authority ratio then also then slipped down, and we're down to 10.86. The district and the board had set a goal quite a number of years ago, trying to be at 10.0. We're getting, we've been slowly slipping, creeping closer to that 10.0 number. And so you can kind of see where that trend has been over the past few years. And then this is the ratio, and it's basically, this ratio just compares how much you basically exceeded your breakeven for the year. Again, we're dipping into our reserves a little bit. And you can see, if we'd had a perfect year like we did two years ago, or near-perfect year, we were literally, revenue expenditures were literally identical. That's why you see that minus .04, they were literally identical that year.
So this is always hard too for individuals in the community to be able to understand and sometimes wrap their brains around. Again, we have the maximum authority, excuse me, the budget authority. And you have so many dollars you can expend per year. And then you have that unspent authority that carries forward year to year to year. Last year was the year where we had really categorical or really historically low state funding, as well as that kind of flattening of our enrollment. So we knew that there was going to be some additional expenditures that are going to come out of our cash flows and of our unspent authority to pay for those ongoing expenses. When you have a combination of historically low state funding, as well as a flattening of the enrollment, that budget guarantee and the dollars received aren't enough to keep up with the inflationary costs of doing business. So we knew that was going to occur, but the challenge with that is now recognizing that to be able to have those go up. You know, we know our metrics are still within the ranges that we expect, but it's something, as we've talked about now for two to three years, cash reserve levies, some of those other metrics, to be able to keep an eye on. So when we do set our budgets in April, we're cognizant of those.
I just want to go back to this slide for a second. A few years ago, we talked about when our authority was going up, we talked about, this is our rainy day savings account. And, you know, there's this old saying, what goes up goes down, and what goes down goes up. And so, you know, we were building for a rainy day. If that rainy day would come, it's sort of interesting that that decline starts to tie directly with reductions in annual supplemental state aid increases that we've been receiving from Des Moines and as they go through their budget struggles down there as well. So it's kind of interesting how that all ties together. But that's why we have built our authority up, to be able to weather these sorts of things without any real difficulties. And there was no impact for students and the staff for this last year. So now we'll kind of go through the other funds real quick. And this is just a quick reminder of what the total assets and fund balances receive. Activity Fund, you can see that they finished the year at $528,000 net fund balance. There's a revenue and expenditures, and I think the, the increase or I guess decline in revenue is kind of a two-part thing. One of it is there'd been some guidance from the Department of Education a couple of years ago on expenses within the Activity Fund. And some things are being shifted from the Activity Fund to the General Fund. So there's a little bit of an impact there. But also, I know that athletic programs in particular are experiencing increasing costs with, as an example, trainer costs, have trainers come to be at athletic events, say, for the kids and that sort of thing. So that's sort of a combination of a couple of things that have driven that a little bit. Management Fund, as of course, we know the Management Fund is used for, basically, for our liability property auto workers' compensation premiums and that sort of thing. You can see we have a little bit of a tick up in balance for this year. That net balance of $618,000, or expenditures, excuse me, the revenue of $757,000, that, those lines are going to reverse for fiscal '19 as we reduce the amount of revenue we asked for. And I know that we had a little bit more of an increase in the premiums for our insurance than what we originally projected. So that, you'll see a year from now that those lines will be a lot closer together. District Support Trust Fund, that's a very small account. As you can see, it's just a little, about $17,000 in it, and assets in the fund balance match out. Capital Projects Fund, this is the fund that, when the district sold, it's $32 million of GO bonds for Aldrich, North Cedar, and Orchard Hill. You can see where the money came in last school year, or 2016-17 school year, excuse me. And then now you can see what the fund balance is for this year as we've been drawing down on that. As you can see, we spent $21.22 million on construction projects out of that fund this last year. But we did earn about $250,000 in interest. So we were able to leverage some of that. We thank Dan and Donnell for doing that. This is Fund 33, the state one-cent local option sales tax. We have three lines on this one to sort of show everybody what our fund balance is, and then also to show what our available fund balance is because we are required to hold $995,000 back in a reserve fund for one of the two revenue bonds that we have outstanding. Revenue and expenditures for the year, this gets a little confusing too on the end. It looks like that we had a bump in revenue, and expenditures were more than anticipated. But we had, when the district purchased the high school, new high school site, we expensed dollars out of Fund 33 into Fund 36 in order to pay them out, and then into Fund 40 because that's part of a requirement through the Department of Education and the Uniform School Financial Accounting. So there's some accounting transfers that had to take place this last year. So it sort of inflates revenue expenditures a little bit. But this, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, so, so sorry. So that's the jump from 4.88 million to 6.36.
That's not really true. You got to take 1.2 off of that 6.3.
And that 1.2 is coming?
That's again, the
Just transferring the funds.
Transferring funds, we paid 1.2 of the 1.51 million for the high school site, new high school site.
Okay, so that's about 5.16.
Right, so about five million.
So it is, it is a good increase over the 16, 17, 18.
That's what makes it a little confusing.
Yep, gotcha.
And now, this is what we're anticipating will happen in that fund moving forward. Last year at this time, we had anticipated that we would have about 8.86 million at the end of June. As you can see, we were at 9.21, so we had a little bit more. And a year ago, we anticipated at this low point, we anticipated about 1.12, and we're now looking at about 1.74. Now, that's a combination of more dollars coming in through the one-cent sales tax and interest that we earned on the GO bonds, about $250,000. And then also interest that we earned on this fund. We earned about $90,000 worth of interest more on this fund than we did last year too. So between all those different pieces kind of coming together, that's what shows the difference. Why we have about $600,000 more at our low point than what we did, than what we were estimating a year ago.
Just as a reminder here, this was part of the construction projects, the dip. We knew that the bond of $32 million of the $40 million projects, there's going to be about $800, or $8 million that were going to come out of this fund. So that's an anticipated dip due to the fact that we backfilled those construction projects.
Yeah, we're on track to basically expend all of our Fund 31 dollars or our GO bond dollars by December. We're still on track to be doing that. And then we'll be hitting, transferring those expenses to Fund 33 to finish out. Here's the physical plant and equipment levy. Fund balance, about the same as what it was a year ago, not really a whole lot changed. That was, but that's a little misleading because you'll see, it looks like that we had all this revenue come in, but you have to take 1.2 million dollars off of that because of the transfer. Again, as we had the hopscotch, that dollar's from one fund to another fund to a third. So that kind of skews that quite a bit. And then debt service levy, there's about $320,000 sitting in there at the end of last year. And of course, those dollars will be used towards this current school year's debt obligations. And that, those dollars would be a combination of sinking fund dollars that we have to transfer from Fund 33 to there for the revenue bonds and property taxes received. So that's sort of a combination of both. And then you can see the revenue expenditures for the year and the debt service levy as well, right there. We'll roll real quick into the food service account, and you can see the fund balance. And then we're required by GASBID to start recording pension expense with that. And so the dashed line in the middle shows what those numbers would look like if we weren't recording the pension expense. Because it looked like that we all of a sudden went terrible with fund balance, but it was a GASBID requirement that we had to start putting the pension expense on the books for that particular fund because it's considered a business or an enterprise fund. And so we had to report it. So that kind of gives you an idea where that's at. There's the revenue and expenditures. You can see, actual revenue was almost identical to what it was the previous year. Expenditures slipped pretty slightly. But when you look at that over the last three years, pretty slightly, but when you look at that over the last three years, they haven't moved by more than about 60 to about $80,000 one way or the other. So they've been pretty consistent in their fund, too, as well as what they've been, how they've been budgeting and, and working with that. And that's a testament to that team. And then last but not least, the private purpose fund. Again, that's for a private trust that the district holds, about just under 18,000. And the agency funds, and you only see fund balances on them because technically they're not assets of the district. We just hold them in a fiduciary manner. Almost all of that relates to tuition dollars that flow through the district through the River Hills Consortium. They're not the district's dollars. We hold them as we, as we're the fiscal agent. In total, you can see for last year, the district took in just a little over 80 million, 81 million, but we crossed the threshold on the expenditure side. We just made $100 million worth of expenditures last year, and of course, the construction projects were 21 some million dollars of that. And that sort of skews that number a little bit. And then you can see a little bit of a historical trend to that. Of course, last year, with the $32 million GO bond sale, and then the refinancing of our revenue bonds, that made us look like we took in all sorts of dollars, it was 122 million. And then, of course, the expenses were up because of the refinancing as well, and the construction projects started. And so with that, I would be absolutely remiss without thanking Donnell, Carrie, Jill, my entire team at the business office. They're the people that put, do all the day-to-day work to pull all the, all the information together and make the upload. And without them, we filed the audit with, the certified annual report was actually ready two weeks before it was due. And that's a testament to, to that team, because I will tell you, there are other school districts that they're working three minutes before the deadline to push the button. And we didn't have that problem. And we sat back and had a soft drink when the button got pushed on Friday, so. So I want to thank them for all their hard work. Without them, none of this would happen. And with that, I'd entertain any questions the board would have.
Questions for Doug?
So it ebbs and flows, as you can see, especially with the expenditures and the revenues, the last slide. You know, last year, we took in 121 million, but we, we spent 80 or 90 million. This year was reversed. We took in 82 because of the bonds, but we spent a little over 100. So everything's kind of a snapshot in time, and it's so hard to be able to pinpoint that. But, you know, when you look at where our goals are at, based on some of the metrics that are there, we are where we should be at, but we know that there were some buy downs that were starting to slide. And as we look at that for the April budgeting, we need to make sure we're cognizant about that. Two years ago, we increased our cash reserve levies. We, we knew that we spread that out over two years, so we knew that there were going to be some slides within those. But we also know it's important to look at that each and every year, because take this year, we're going to serve about 108 students in our seats without getting the funding until next fiscal year. So that's going to put a strain on our, our cash balances going into next year, so we need to be able to look at that come April. And that's hard for people to kind of wrap their brains around, knowing that we're always at least one year behind with general education dollars that flow in from the state. When we talk about dollars for students with special needs, those are always two years behind. So we're trying to, to work in a cash balance world, but also in a kind of an accrual balance world. Not accrual, as a mean, but as a cash balance accruing for accounting. Does that sum it up well?
I was going to have a smart comment about being cruel, but I didn't.
This is your opportunity, Doug. All right. Any, any questions or comments for Doug? Do I have a motion to approve the annual, or the car report?
So I move.
Hold on, sorry.
I'll go ahead and read that into the record if you-
I would prefer that, yes.
I move that the Board of Directors approve the 2017-18 school year certified annual report, 2017-18 certified annual report, special education supplement, and submit a request to the School Budget Review Committee to seek allowable growth and supplemental aid for the negative special education balance of $467,283.30.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Haseman. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Moving on now to item H on the agenda, the approval of the SBRC application for the LEP, Modified Allowable Growth.
And we do have a slide presentation on this one. Not as long, I promise, as the last one. And this is for annual request for limited English proficient students. And to give you a little background about this, some statistics, we had 108 students last school year that needed LEP services. Three teachers take care of that. There were 22 languages that those students had, and they represent about 1.95% of our population. And you can see the graphs on the bottom kind of give you a snapshot over the last few years of the number of students served and the number of different languages. I think last year we were at 26 or 25 languages to kind of give you an idea of the number of languages that we were working with. Expenses, as you can see, we only ask for expenses that for our direct instruction. We have other options, as you can see on the school, on the, on the slide, but we don't do that. We only ask for those three instructors' costs. And we try and keep, try and keep very mindful of the costs associated with that. So you can see our total expenses were just a little over 249,000. We received 117,000 worth of weighted funding, some 22,000 worth of additional other resource funding, plus modified allowable growth from last year of 11,700. So that totaled 151, and that leaves us $98,079 short. And so our, our request would be that the board approve a request to the SBRC for that amount to shore up that deficit for the last school year.
This is very similar to students with special needs. The state knows that it does not fund at the level of required services or educational supports necessary. So they say that because most districts, they know are going to run a deficit, you ask for additional allowable growth to offset that. So it goes back to the funding formula and the fact that they understand that they're not funding at the, the rate necessary.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors of the Cedar Falls Community School District approve the application to the School Budget Review Committee for excess limited English proficient LEP student costs in the amount of $98,079.13.
Thank you, Jenny. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Eric Giddens. Any questions or comments for Doug?
One quick question, just to make sure. Just as with special ed, these students are served, I take it, in the least restrictive environment. They're going to be essentially in the classrooms that most other kids would be in. Is that correct?
Exactly.
For the large part?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Right? Be pulled out for services as needed, and-
Exactly. It depends on the level of supports necessary and where that's best served to meet their needs. And truly, we have staff that focuses on how do we make sure that they learn the, the English language appropriately, but also provide the supports in the classroom as necessary, and as, as much as possible.
And so we can continue their education as best we can without having to deprive them necessarily of, of education, because they don't understand English. We'll try to pull them out and work with them in any way we can.
In what-
I take it we don't have a person who can necessarily speak all of these 22 languages?
No, no. And that's, you know, sometimes we, it's said that we're not real diverse sometimes in Cedar Falls. And we look at the, the broad range of languages, which are in the packets. It's really neat to see the, the exposure and, and all the differences that we have, sometimes culturally within our schools. But back to your question, you know, I think what we pride ourselves on is our collaborative teams and our professional learning environment, our enrichments and enhancements that we have embedded in the school day, and that's for all kids. So if you are a student with special needs, you might be twice exceptional. You might have some opportunities, or really focusing in on enrichment opportunities, but we might have a student in tag that also needs some supports. So we have those embedded across our school day, across each of our buildings. So that includes, you know, students that might be learning, learning English as their second language, but also students across every building.
Are, are most of the students at the elementary level? Or does it, I wonder about the three teachers. Are they floating between all of the schools?
It's all over. And Pam can talk about this, but we, we have students that are in ELP across the district.
Yep. For the most part, each of our teachers serve three buildings, usually in secondary and then two elementaries. And like this time of year, we're pretty much done assessing the students, and after we're done assessing, then we determine the teacher's schedules.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on now to the board committee assignments. And Dr. Pat T. put a hard copy in front of your place this evening. Glenn.
The comment that I had is we have several board committees that we review and, and look at and have board members involved with. There are two of these down at the bottom that we've already fulfilled with the board goal committee and the superintendent goal committee. The thought was potentially, if you want to look over this, to see, again, areas of interest and what you might like to be involved with. And you can let Joyce and I know, we can kind of put the spreadsheet together and come back with recommendations to, to the board, based on everybody's hopes, wants, and wishes. The one that we do need to finalize tonight is the second one down, which is the, which is the IASB Delegate Assembly Representative. That is something that they are asking prior to the upcoming conference that we have and will attend. So that's one we'll just need to make sure we finalize to know who that will be, even if we make the final approval coming up here at the next meeting, based on everybody's email and requests. So really, it's a matter of who, who has the time to do that next, on that Wednesday of the Iowa Association of School Boards, knowing that Mr. Haseman did it last year, but I know that Sasha's going to be down there. I know that Joyce is going to be down there on that Wednesday, because I believe that Delegate Assembly starts at 9:00 a.m. on, on that Wednesday.
And I've done it for two years, so if someone else would like to do it, you're more than welcome to.
And who's going to be there? Joyce and Sasha at that time in the morning?
I'm happy to do it. Sasha, where are you, will you be sitting in a special place because of the legislative?
I don't think so. And they said that I could serve in this role. However, it would be nice to have two folks from our district, I think, also. They said it could either be me or somebody else, but I will be there.
Okay.
Just-
Any others?
Does anybody have a strong desire to sit at the Delegate Assembly?
I would throw my name in the hat, in my hat.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Indeed. To be quite honest, doesn't matter whose name is on here. So it's the fact that even us collaboratively can sit around and visit about what we think as, as whoever's name does either the clicker or pulls up the card. So-
And I take it, then, these are weighted votes that will be casted?
Yes.
They are.
Yes.
So if we have Jeff as the Delegate Assembly, that means that all the information will be sent to you as well, and it's just a matter of trying to share that out to, to board members. And then, based on what we decided now, I think, three meetings ago, with what we voted on for our-
Priorities.
Priorities legislatively, then you cast those votes with the clicker.
Yeah.
Can't go rogue, though.
Yeah.
Okay. So everybody comfortable with that?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I will submit your name tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on now to the Superintendent's Report.
Just a couple of different items. Again, the State Convention for the Iowa Association of School Boards is November 14th, 15th, and 16th, and very excited about that, as we, we are every year. October 22nd, we have our informational report. That will be the Iowa assessments. And again, very exciting for that component, too. And I'd be remiss without saying, congratulations to Doug. We're extremely excited about his retirement for his own personal sake. Sad for us as a district, but certainly know we've been honored to work with him, and he's going to be a big loss for us as a district. Congratulations.
Thank you.
But we've still got you through the end of January.
Yes, we do.
Right.
Maybe, maybe only the end of December.
Oh.
But I know that Donnell will do a fantastic job, and you'll be in very, very good hands.
Yes. Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns from board members?
I, I would like to say, this time of year, I know as a teacher that this is a long stretch from Labor Day to Thanksgiving as a teacher. And I appreciate everything that our staff does during this time. But in particular, I'd like to mention North Cedar, that they are going through some pretty trying times right now. And we appreciate the extra effort. They're without a playground right now. They're without a cafeteria, is that correct? And without a gymnasium for the time being. Can you tell me there might be some good news coming on that front? We hope soon that they might get a little. So I imagine, as parents, you know what it's like to have that rainy Saturday where you can't let the kids out. Well, imagine having several hundred kids, and now your house is half the size it usually is, too. So we definitely appreciate what North Cedar is doing right now.
Exactly. And that's so important to recognize, that those short-term challenges and the long-term gains that are going to come out of that. And they've done such a remarkable job working through some of those challenges, staying upbeat and positive, because again, it's without having some of the spaces that you know are so important for kids, just to have that well-rounded educational opportunity, knowing that they will be there and they're going to be so much better than anything they've ever had in the past. But being able to get there sometimes is challenging. And then with the rain and the storms that we continuously have, it doesn't help the situation at all, either. So we are inside wishing for no more rain and dry conditions for the next multiple weeks.
And migrating geese, too, I understand. We're hoping that they don't decide to roost for a long time in our neighborhood up there.
They're trying to find dry land like the rest of us, so.
At North Cedar?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Couple of different spots.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. First, I need to thank again Upper Iowa for being here, and we, we are delighted to have you. Please join us anytime. You came at a great night so that you could hear Doug and just what he does in all his glory. So you don't get an opportunity to hear just someone that really grasps school finance as well as he does, and able to drill down and simplify it. So hopefully you understand it as well as we should understand it. And we, I think, even though I've been on the board a long time, I always take something away from how he, what he says, or how he says it differently this time than he did a year ago. So Doug, again, thank you.
Well, thank you. And I'm just happy to see nobody fell asleep.
They didn't. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
It's been moved by Eric Giddens. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Jeff Haseman. Questions or comments? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.